Do you know that there's anything on the consent calendar that you're gonna wanna have a bigger discussion about?
Okay, we will reconvene the special meeting. Mr. City Attorney, is there any final action to report out?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor. The City Council gave direction to the City Attorney to intervene in two cases.
Hold on one moment. Okay. We were having technical difficulties, but I think we have it now.
Should I repeat, Madam Mayor?
I didn't realize that was the extent of your comments.
Thank you, Madam. The City Council gave direction to the City Attorney to intervene in two cases.
Okay. We will adjourn the special meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council on Tuesday, March 10, 2020. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Howell
Here.
Kozlowski
Here.
Aquino
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sheldon will be participating by teleconference, and Councilmember Gaylord is absent.
Okay, if you'd all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any agenda updates?
You do. You have additional item regarding item, I'm sorry, additional information regarding item number eight. And that information has been made available to the council members and available to the public at the back table.
Okay, please call the first item.
Your first item this evening is scheduled presentation. This is a presentation regarding regional housing needs assessment, the schedule, and housing element update. This will involve the planned process and schedule for the upcoming housing element update.
Madam Mayor, maybe I skipped it. There should be business from the floor.
Do we have any business from the floor?
No.
Okay. Anybody here want to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Okay. So we'll go ahead with our scheduled presentation, and just a favor of my colleagues, if we could hold all of our questions and comments until the presentation is done. That will also allow Vice Mayor Sheldon an opportunity to follow along a little bit better, I think. So who's making the presentation?
Pam, are you introducing this item?
No.
Yes, sorry. So this is the
Rena.
Rena.
Yes. We have Chelsea Payne. She will be giving the presentation from Ascent Environmental. She will be working with us over the next year and a half on our housing element update. And you should, she's a familiar face to you because she led the way on the, as a consultant for the general plan update. So thank you, Chelsea.
All right. Thank you very much, Pam. Good evening. Again, I'm Chelsea Payne with Ascent Environmental. And as Pam said, I've been working with the city of Folsom over the years on the general plan update and on the last two housing element updates. So this is my third housing element with Folsom. So I have, I have some history working here, some familiarity with the issues in the past. But we do have some new, new challenges entering this housing element. So we're gonna start to talk about some of those challenges here tonight.
Chelsea, if you could just make sure you're talking right into the microphone so that Vice Mayor Sheldon is able to hear us, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Is that better? Sure.
Thank you.
So, so first, a little bit of background for those that are new to the housing element. The housing element is an element of your general plan, but it has some unique requirements that set it apart from the rest of the general plan. It's the only element of the general plan where the state sets the schedule for when it needs to be updated. And there's a very specific eight-year planning period. So your general plan serves a much longer, has a much longer planning horizon. Your housing element is looking at your housing needs over an eight-year period. The housing element that we're starting to update now, this next one, has an adoption deadline of May 31, 2021. And it'll serve a planning period through 2029. The housing element is the only element of the general plan that's reviewed by the state for compliance with state law. And you know, while, while state law has some requirements for general plans, the requirements for housing elements are just very detailed, very technical, and very lengthy. There are much more requirements that go into the housing element. And then at its core, the housing element is the city's plan for accommodating your fair share of the regional housing needs. So that's where we will be talking about what the regional housing needs assessment is in just a minute. But first, an overview, just a look at our, our schedule. This is our preliminary schedule for the project. We're kicking off the project here this month, getting started. We're gonna be getting a project website up pretty soon where you'll be able to go to get all the information about this project. We're here at the council meeting tonight, and we're gonna be doing some initial community outreach, working with, talking to different housing stakeholders in the community, talking with the community at large to get an understanding of what the major housing needs are and what some of the opportunities are to address in this housing element. We've already gotten to work, working on the analysis, updating the background information, looking at, starting to look at the sites inventory. And our plan is to publish the housing element in August of this year. So between now and August, we have quite a bit of work to do to look at your, what land you have available for, for housing. And we're gonna be talking about the need to rezone some sites. So we're gonna, between now and August, we wanna develop what that rezone strategy is gonna be, and we're gonna, we're gonna mention that here tonight. After we publish the draft housing element, we'll be coming back to, we'll be going to the Planning Commission and then coming back to the City Council before we, before we send the housing element to the state for their review. So we wanna get the City Council's blessing, get your input and feedback at that time, and make sure it reflects what you want to be in the housing element before we go to the state for them to conduct, conduct their review. The state then has 60 days to review the housing element and comment on it. And we will get a comment letter from the state, and we'll be having to address any comments, working with the state. And then after we've satisfied all of the state's comments and concerns, we'll be coming back to the, the City Council at the end of the process for adoption. And we, we plan on wrapping that up by April. But again, the adoption deadline is May 31, 2021. So that's the date we're gonna be trying to hit for final adoption. So I'll talk for a minute about the regional housing needs assessment. This is really a core, one of the core requirements of the housing element. So this process starts with the state of California, issues for each region of the state, they issue regional housing needs determination. And that's the number of housing units that every, that the region as a whole needs to accommodate. So for this next planning period, which is 2021 to 2029, the, the need for the whole SECOG region, or the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, the whole Sacramento region has to accommodate about 154,000 housing units. And SECOG, along with every other metropolitan planning organization, is required by law to develop a methodology to distribute that regional need, so that 154,000 units, to every jurisdiction within the SECOG region. And they've, SECOG has developed, and the SECOG Board has adopted that methodology. And Folsom's share of the RENA is 6,363 housing units. So that's the target number of housing units that you need to demonstrate you have enough land to accommodate over the eight-year planning period. And that target number of housing units is broken down by different income categories, those that are shown here, from very low-income households, low-income, moderate income, and above moderate income. And what this table shows is what your, your current regional housing needs allocation, your current RENA for the 2013 to 2021 period. You can see that your current number is 4,633 housing units. And collectively, we refer to the very low income and the low income, we collectively refer to that as the lower income. And the last time your lower-income regional housing needs allocation was 2,072 units. But this time around, we're, you're faced with a target of, you have to accommodate 3,567 lower-income units. So that's a 72% increase. So there are a lot of reasons why the, your, your RENA has increased, and then the lower-income proportion of that RENA is, has also increased. So some of the reasons that you're looking at a higher number, first of all, we're, the last regional housing needs assessment was done during a recession. We were in the foreclosure crisis. So when we were talking about housing needs, there was a much lower need. There was really high vacancy rate. So there were a lot of, just that alone is one of the main reasons that the target is higher this, this time around. But there were also some changes in state law that require the state to also account for some of your existing housing needs in the region. So they look at rates of overcrowding and cost burden of your existing households and add additional units to account for those issues. So that's, it's really the vacancy. There's a much lower vacancy rate now. So we, as a region, need to plan for more housing to get to a healthier vacancy rate and then account for some of these new requirements.
How do they, how do they actually account for overcrowding of existing households?
There is some data available by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. They collect data from the census. They do some analysis from the census data on overcrowding in the region. So that's, that really comes from census data, or American Community Survey data. There were also some new factors, some new requirements of state law that affected the methodology that SECOG developed. So the methodology this time around needed to explicitly account for greenhouse gas emissions reductions, which, that didn't really result in a higher number for Folsom. But some of these other factors, a balance between low-wage jobs and affordable housing, that ended up really pushing up the city's proportion of the lower-income RENA. And then the requirement to affirmatively further fair housing. And what this requirement did in the methodology, it, it pushed more of the lower-income housing need to communities that were considered higher resource areas. So putting a lower proportion of the lower-income need in areas of low resource or high segregation or high poverty areas, and giving a higher-low income number to those communities that are considered higher resource, so essentially higher-income areas. So that's why you see the city of Folsom's lower-income target go quite a bit higher this time around. So what we need to do to show how we can accommodate the city's RENA, we look at all of your, all of your vacant and underutilized sites that are zoned for housing or for mixed use. And those sites that allow for housing at 30 units per acre are considered to accommodate your lower-income housing need. And I'm focusing on the lower-income housing need because almost every community has enough single-family zoning or lower-density zoning to accommodate the above-moderate income need. That's almost never an issue for the community. It really comes down to, do you have enough high-density multifamily land to accommodate your lower-income housing need? So we look at all of the available sites, vacant, underutilized sites, that allow for 30 units per acre. And here in Folsom, that includes the, the designations or the zones that are shown here. So your R4 zone, your general apartment district, your mixed-use district, within the Folsom Plan area, that's your multifamily, high-density, and your mixed-use. And then there are some new, new designations that were introduced in the general plan that we're gonna be looking at this time around. And that includes the East Bidwell mixed-use overlay, and then within your transit priority areas as well. But those, those last two were not included in your last housing element. We'll be looking at some new sites within, in those areas. So working with your staff, we did some preliminary analysis to try to figure out, based on the sites that are in the current housing element that allow 30 units per acre, what, and looking at what your target, your RENA is. So we wanted to figure out how, what our potential shortfall is going to be, and then, in turn, what the rezone obligation is. Because at the end of the day, if you, if you do your analysis and you don't have enough capacity to meet your RENA, the city is then obligated to rezone sites to, to higher density at 30 units per acre to accommodate that lower-income RENA. So again, your lower-income RENA is 3,567 units. Our preliminary estimate is that you have capacity for about 2,826 units, which would make the shortfall about 741 units. And that, and I said 30 units per acre. The rezone is actually, we, we have to count at 20 units per acre. We would be rezoning for 20, at 20 units per acre, minimum density. That equals 37 acres in a rezone obligation. Again, this is very preliminary. There are a lot of factors that are gonna affect this number. We don't know, there are a lot of new requirements about, about the size of site, sites, whether we can count an underutilized site or not. So we're gonna be working with the state, and really, they're gonna scrutinize every single site that's in the inventory. But this is about what we were seeing now, based on the sites that are in the current housing element, for the additional acreage that we need to identify. Now, this doesn't include sites within the East Bidwell mixed-use overlay. And we do, we do think we can find some additional sites within that overlay zone. That was an overlay designation that was introduced in the general plan, and the city right now is working on a zoning code update and developing the zoning standards for that. And, and also within the transit priority areas. That was something introduced in the general plan, and the zoning standards are being worked out now through the zoning code update. So we hope to find some more sites within those areas. But we, we do know that we're going to have to look elsewhere in the community to find some sites to upzone to a higher-density residential, or rezone from non-residential to residential. But we, we also wanna draw your attention to the no-net-loss requirement because it's, it's not good enough to just meet your RENA. The 37 acres is what we see is needed to just, just meet the number, not to exceed the number. But it's really important to also make sure that you have a surplus capacity. We wanna have as much surplus as we possibly can because there's a requirement that the city maintain adequate sites for lower-income housing throughout the eight-year planning period between now and 2029. And so when we do the sites inventory, all of your vacant, all of your vacant, underutilized sites that are zoned for high-density housing, those all get counted towards your lower-income RENA. But we know that not every high-density site gets built with low-income housing. A lot of that will get built as market-rate housing because there's demand for market-rate multifamily as well. And so as you're approving projects on those sites identified for lower-income housing, we have, you have to account for those, that loss of potential units for lower income. So if you approve a market-rate project on one of your 10-acre sites, then that automatically, you lose those potential units from your lower income. And there's a requirement that you identify and make available a replacement site within 180 days. And that's not a lot of time when you think about the amount of time it takes to process a rezone and do sequo analysis. 180 days is really not a long time. So we don't, we wanna set you up to have surplus capacities so that you don't have to do this, find a replacement site every time you're approving a project on a higher-density site. I also wanna point out, though, that it's important to, to know that the burden to find those replacement sites is, falls on the local jurisdiction and not on the developer. So if a developer of a market-rate project comes in and wants to build on a high-density site, you cannot compel, it's not the responsibility of that developer to find the replacement site or to build at the inventoried income level. You can't compel them to build a 100% affordable project there. And you can't deny a project because it's not low income. And again, the burden is on the city to find that replacement site. So we wanna make sure that we build in a little bit of a buffer when we look at the sites in the housing element. So some of the strategies that we're gonna be exploring to meet the RENA, again, like I said, we wanna build in a buffer of extra capacity. And what that is, I've just threw out a target of maybe 20 to 30% to account for the no-net loss. We're going to identify sites within the East Bidwell mixed-use overlay and look at the surrounding transit stations and see if there are some real opportunity sites within those areas. We wanna talk to some property owners that would be willing to rezone or upzone some sites. We're gonna look at, see if there's any potential on surplus public lands, maybe state lands or other surplus lands. Because there is, there are some new state law requirements around making information available about surplus state lands. The state's going through a mapping exercise of mapping all of those. And as local agencies dispose of surplus public lands, the first right of refusal goes to affordable developers. So the state's really focusing on this, and we need to make sure we're, we're exploring all opportunities there. And we're hoping to really rezone these sites in conjunction with the housing element update to do it now and try to be as efficient in the process as we can. And then we're gonna be looking at some policy options as well. There have been some changes in case law and some changes in state law around inclusionary housing. So we'll be bringing some questions to the City Council about potential changes to the inclusionary housing ordinance. That's one potential strategy for meeting the RENA. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Chelsea. Questions? We'll go Carrie first. Carrie wants to go last.
At this point, well, I guess I'll go with the second question first. You were talking about 30 units per acre. And I think it's important for anybody that's watching this or sitting in the room tonight to understand that that 30 units per acre is significantly higher density than what we were looking at during the affordable housing discussions, or last time we did this. So that's an increase in density. So has that increase in density been considered for the existing multifamily zone property? That's one question. And then the second question is, you were talking about the 30 units per acre, but then in the, the calculation of the 37 acres, you said that you were looking at 20 units per acre. So where'd the 20 come from?
Yeah, no, good question. I kinda glossed over that pretty quickly. So the 30 unit per acre, there's something called the default density standard that's written into state law. And every jurisdiction in the state has a default density standard, depending on what type of jurisdiction you are. If you're in a rural area, the density that's deemed appropriate for affordable housing is maybe 10 or 15 units per acre. If you're in a suburban area, 20 units per acre is, is a density that the state will say, yes, if your zoning allows 20 units per acre, that's adequate for a lower-income housing. But the city of Folsom falls within the Sacramento metro area, and you're actually not classified as suburban, but you're classified as a metropolitan area. And so the state will accept sites that are zoned at 30 units per acre as appropriate for a lower-income housing. So your zone, the zones that we look at have to at least allow 30 units per acre. That's not a minimum. Right now, your multifamily high-density allows 20 to 30 units per acre, 30 being the upper end of the density.
Which was not something that we chose to do. That was forced upon us by the state.
That's right. It used to be lower. The new 30-unit-per-acre density standard went into effect with the last housing element. So it's a relatively new requirement as of 2013. It used to be, 20 units per acre used to be the density that was acceptable here. The Sacramento metro region grew into a bigger region, and Folsom got reclassified. So now 30 units per acre is the density. So your zoning has to allow 30 units per acre. So that's right. The last cycle, the city made a global change to your multifamily high-density zone to allow that 30 units per acre. The 20 units per acre gets into the rezone obligation. So when, after you've gone through the process of identifying sites, if you have a shortfall and you're required to rezone sites, those sites that you rezone must have a minimum density standard of 20 units per acre. So right now, your, your multifamily high-density zone goes 20 to 30. So as long as you would rezone to, you would meet that 20-unit-per-acre minimum density, and that's across the state. Any city that has an obligation to rezone must rezone sites at a, to have a minimum density of 20 units per acre. And HCD calculates your rezone obligation based on 20 units per acre.
Doesn't that effectively build in that buffer that you were talking about?
In, in some ways, it could. Yeah, because on your other sites, we'll be counting your capacity, we won't be counting it based on the maximum 30 because we have to, we have to base the capacity calculation on sort of a realistic expected density. So we have to look at what other projects get approved at over the past year. And, and usually, we, the, the calculation we did was at 80% of the maximum. So I think that's 24 units per acre is what we calculated the capacity on. And the state, well, the state scrutinizes your assumptions and your capacity, and 80% of maximum is, is usually an acceptable standard.
Okay. And another point of clarification, when you've been talking about this, I just don't want anybody to misunderstand. It was, your presentation was kind of more along the lines that the city does this, and I don't want anybody to think that this, because the city basically has very little land that we actually own.
Right.
And none of it right now is, is zoned for housing. So what we're talking about is not property that the city of Folsom owns. It's property that the developers that are sitting in the audience own. It's other people's property.
Correct. Yes. And when we talk about meeting the RENA, it's about identifying sites, mostly private property, that have the zoning to accommodate that, your housing targets. But the city is not in the business of building housing. The city doesn't build housing. So we're not talking about the city having, there's no obligation that the city build that housing. It's about making the land available.
misconception that, that there's a lot of people that think that that's what we do and we don't.
Right, and that's why I'm, yes, appreciate that.
Point that I wanna make is that And the only other point that I want to make is that in the last go-around, there was a significant amount of property that needed to be rezoned. And I'm just trying to figure out where that's going to come from this next go-around. So that's going to be the perplexing question.
Mike?
What is the, what's the income that the categories are based on?
It's based on the area.
Our median.
Median income and.
And roughly.
You know, I don't have that off the top of my head. Stephanie, do you, do you know what the area median is for?
I believe it's about $68,000 for a four-person household.
Yeah, that sounds right. So about $68,000 for a four-person household. And it's based on the Sacramento County median income.
Gotcha. Okay. Sitting on Secog, I've talked about this a lot. So I kind of, I'm unsure what questions to ask exactly. The, one that I have asked before and might be interesting just for kicking around here is, what is, what is the possibility of a special use designation that applies across the board to all residential property to allow for higher densities if a developer wants to do that?
And that, that could, that's a potential, that's something we could explore.
I mean, wouldn't that effectively max out our potential and keep a buffer of, a maximum size buffer as well?
And there.
And since we can't compel anybody to comply necessarily with building high-density, what's the harm? And I'm asking that sort of just generally.
One of the things, I, I think it's an interesting idea, you know, the idea of an overlay. But anytime we do an overlay designation like that, a rezoning, we have to do the analysis, the sequo analysis of the impacts of that potential densification, right? So I think sequo would be one, one big hurdle or factor with a broad sweeping overlay consideration. But I think any ideas that the council has as we move through this process are worth, you know, considering and vetting and, you know, exploring.
Yeah, I just think that the state has effectively just dumped a problem on us. And why not just take it to the end of the road so that we never have to think about it again? Give them what they want. Make everything possible. As long as they don't make us compel anybody to build it, it's an academic exercise, right? Even if it involves a bunch of sequo documentation.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, it's a great comment and we will add it to our list of things to consider. I think it would have to be primarily for undeveloped or underutilized sites. That would be potentially a way to, to, to target it. I, well, because I think anytime you rezone, even through overlay somebody's property, it changes a lot of things, right? So we'd have to explore it, you know, quite a bit further. And we will add it to our list of, of ideas. But, you know, it, I'm sure there's a lot of things I'm not thinking about right now, but, but we will, we'll follow up with you on that.
Okay.
And that, that overlay, it could also be selectively applied. So it wouldn't be a blanket. But an overlay zone would, could be one potential solution.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the way that you have special use approvals for certain types of commercial activity. If you could make high-density residential a special use on any residential parcel, it wouldn't be an overlay per se, right?
Yeah. I'll also add that in, there are a lot of requirements that come with that rezone obligation. On your rezone sites, you have to allow that, that multifamily by right. Can't be a conditional use and it can't be subject to sequo. So it would have to be a permitted use. And so there, there are just some additional considerations that we'd have to look at.
So if you made it an automatically permitted use, but requiring a request from the landowner, maybe create a different category of special use approvals where it's a, it's a by right thing that a landowner just has to request. And then we can say that everything is zoned for multifamily high-density because we will automatically approve it. So I, I'm being a little flippant here because it's, this, this whole process has been annoying. So I'll, I'll reserve any further comment. Thank you.
Oh, and it's going to get a lot more annoying before it gets better. The only other point that I want to make is when you were referring to the audit that the state is doing on surplus land. And this goes back to some stuff that appeared on local social media a few months ago. And I, I just want people to understand that the city of Folsom is not in the process of rezoning any federal land, any state-owned land, or other land that is not either owned by the city of Folsom or in private ownership here. If that happens, it's not at the city's request. It's happening at the request of Governor Newsom. I just want that made clear because I don't want to get a whole bunch more emails about, oh my God, what's going to happen at Folsom prison. So I just want people to understand that.
Does Ernie have any questions?
I have a comment.
Fire away.
You know, Reno presentation dash mission impossible. You know, for, some of us, I've been for my 12-year now, I've been a staunch advocate in reality, not fantasy, to put people that need these affordable housings in housing because of nothing that they've done bad. Just because they don't have enough money to have a house. And we, we worked our butt off on doing that. And I think we've done good for our city, but we've been close to our arena figures in the past. Now you take it and make it harder. And when you say I can zone a property for 30, and I can zone it for affordable housing, but if the developer comes in and decides, no, I don't want it for affordable, I'm going to make it market rate. I have not a thing to say about it. Now, maybe I'm too pessimistic. But I'm a guy that's a realist. I don't just deal in numbers and we crunch. We did this in 2000. And we still have a very low number of, deficit number of what we need to provide the quality of life for the people that help us in this town. These low-income people do a lot of good for us in this town. My gosh. And we've been able to meet the numbers. You take example, we got one that, one builds so many units and gives us four, four hundred of those numbers. We have another developer that builds 140 units with a 100 marketable, 100 affordable, 40 marketable. But we don't have that many people around that will do that. So, I mean, I would try as hard as I could to make those numbers. And I think we have to go around and review every single shelter that we have to find out if we count it or can we not count it. So I, you know, I, I looked at the numbers and I, and I read the material and I thought the presentation was well. Mike had good points. Carrie, you there through the 2000 deal. So I don't know. It's another challenge. We'll meet it. We probably won't fulfill it. But we'll meet it and we'll do, we'll do what, we would do what we want to do in this town. And that is make a home for the people that need it to support this quality of life. Not just to satisfy somebody sitting somewhere high up on a mountaintop saying, I need this many because there's how many I want to come to California. For BS, I'm sorry. I guess maybe I'm not well enough to do two U.S. civil, but I, you got my, you got my real feelings on this subject. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ernie.
So if we rezone enough property to accommodate, accommodate all these units, but nothing gets built, would we still have met our obligation?
Yes. Your obligation is to make the zoning available.
Okay. And what about all these accessory dwelling units that are likely to pop up because the state is taking away our ability to impose restrictions? Do those fall in here anywhere and count toward anything?
Yes, we will be counting a reasonable projection of how many accessory dwelling units we think can be built between now and 2029. So it's, you can't just say, okay, well, on every single parcel, you can build an ADU. So therefore, we have endless numbers. It has to be based on a reasonable projection. So we're, we are doing that. We're going to be analyzing building permit data over the past few years and making a projection that's probably going to increase because of all of the requirements, all of the loosening of requirements for ADUs. But we also have to look at the projected rents of those accessory dwelling units and whether they meet the lower-income need, or maybe it's, it's possibly the moderate-income need. But we, we do need to kind of really take stock of that and justify what income level are those accessory dwelling units really serving.
In, in Folsom right now, those ADUs that exist predominantly in the historic district, rent is ballpark $2,000 a month.
Okay.
So I don't think they're going to, they're going to fall into either of the two lower categories.
And just a question for Pam, because this is the question that the public is asking. When we go to rezone, we'll be looking at land north of 50 and south of 50, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And our development agreements in the Folsom Plan area identify that changes can be made as a result of our arena process.
Okay. Was, is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this? Seeing no one. Thank you very much, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Okay. Move to our next item, please.
Okay, your next item tonight is the consent calendar. You do have a request to pull item four.
I'll move the remainder.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes.
Okay, your item number four is resolution number 10396. This is a resolution in support of the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2020. And you had Bill Rominelli request to speak on this item. Looks like Chief Hillman's coming down.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Rick Hillman, the police chief. And I'm here tonight first to introduce Bill Rominelli. And we're going to talk to you about the support of the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2020. Bill will explain this and then I will give you some facts about Folsom. Thank you, Chief.
Evening, councilmembers. My name is Bill Rominelli. I'm a 20-year Folsom resident. But before I get into this, I think I should also just, in the spirit of transparency, let you know I'm also a paid consultant for the Keeping California Safe Initiative. My firm, FSB Public Affairs, is working on this. So I just want to make sure that's a matter of a record before I get into this. I also want to thank Chief Hillman for his help in bringing this agenda item up before the council today. I know he and I have both spoken individually with some of you. And I'm, I'm very happy to see that this is getting consideration. I just want to summarize what the initiative is. I know the chief has given you a very comprehensive staff report. And then I'm happy to answer any questions. But the long and the short of it is, is that this initiative is about fixing some unintended consequences. For about a decade now, the state has been dealing with the unintended consequences of some public safety, I'll say the word reforms, that were couched as vehicles to help reduce prison populations. But they have in fact created a get-out-of-jail-free card for even some of the most violent criminals out there, including sex offenders. And so this initiative is designed to fix those unintended consequences, as I said. I'll just sum it up. As, as the initiative would do, four things. It would expand the list of violent crimes for which early release is not an option. That includes rape of an unconscious person, sex trafficking of a child, drive-by shootings, and about a dozen other crimes that currently the state of California does not consider as violent. And I can give you a list of those if you're interested. It would also reform the parole system to stop the early release of violent felons and expand parolee oversight and strengthen penalties for parole violations. We do get some questions about that one. And specifically, we're not talking about a one-and-done situation. What the, what the initiative would do is if somebody has violated their parole three times, then after the third time, the parole will be revoked for that individual. It would also expand DNA collection to include those convicted of drug theft, domestic violence, and other serious crimes that would help solve some of the cold cases that the state is dealing with and also help exonerate those who have been wrongly accused. And finally, it would reform theft raw, theft laws to restore accountability for serial thieves and organized theft rings. You may know this already. The, the threshold used to be $450. It was raised to over $900 under one of these propositions. And what we see now is serial thieves who can go into a retailer with a calculator in hand. And as long as they don't have more than $949.99 worth of stolen property, it's pretty much a misdemeanor. And they can go back the next day, do the same thing for the same amount. And they can do that over and over and over again. And merchants across the state are, are just being hammered by that. So, and, and the chief has, in his staff report, has talked specifically about some of the impacts directly on Folsom from that. So I'll turn it over to him to give you those details.
So as Bill mentioned, organized retail theft has been a problem in the state and here in California. We have seen actual events and crimes where people do go into stores with calculators and they're walking out with a certain amount of goods. They also go into the stores with shopping lists. We see this most occurring at retail chain stores. And these people committing the crimes will go from, say, a Victoria's Secret to another one, to another one. They'll travel up the 50 and 80 corridors, going to the Best Buys, the Walmarts, and things like that, targeting specific stores, looking for specific things. We've seen this huge increase since the passage of Proposition 47 in, in 2011. In Folsom, we've seen crime continue to rise last year by 5%. Most of that was contributed to thefts like larceny, burglary, and auto theft. We've also seen a rise in our aggravated assaults over this last year. One thing our, our patrol officers have noticed is when they go to clean up homeless encampments, we'll often find stolen property there. And while we deal with that and, and will take action against those people that have committed those crimes, it just reoccurs because it's a revolving door. And they don't get punished. In Folsom last year, there was over $1 million, almost $1.2 million worth of property stolen from the residents and those visiting Folsom. That's up from 865,000 the year before. This year, we've already seen an increase in that number. So we're concerned about stopping this theft, these thefts. We have coordinated a lot with other agencies in the region and have installed some equipment to help us stop people. We recently, as of like two weeks ago, had a retail theft that occurred. Officers chased the vehicle. And then because there were no other officers available, they let that vehicle go. That vehicle was, within an hour, involved in a drive-by shooting in the Sacramento area. So the people that are coming and committing these crimes aren't somebody just looking for clothing because they have none. They're not getting food because they don't have any and they're hungry. These are people that are targeting our community as well as many other communities. And they are doing so without serious consequences.
Thank you. Any questions for Bill or Chief Hillman? Mike?
I just will comment that I started my life, my working career off in a department store and have some firsthand experiences with rings of thieves stealing jeans literally from as far apart as we are. They would just run in, take them off the jean wall and run out because they knew exactly how many to take. Anyway, so it's kind of sad. And Bill, thank you very much for bringing this forward and the work that you're doing. Appreciate it.
Well, now they bring trash bags in so that they can get more. Any other questions?
I think was, result of Prop 47, the theft of a firearm, which I think used to always be a felony, is now, maybe it's a misdemeanor if it's under that 950. Does this resolve that?
In that case, you're also looking at federal laws involving firearms and firearm theft. Strictly speaking, as it relates, as it relates to this initiative, if the firearm itself is worth, worth less than $950, then yes, it would affect that. But it's going to be on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, okay. Ernie, have any questions?
No.
Okay, okay. Do we have a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay. We are expecting Councilmember Gaylord here momentarily, but we will keep moving and hope he gets here very soon.
Your next item is public Your next item is public hearing, item number seven. This is resolution number 10-399 regarding the Empire Ranch specific plan. You do have a recommendation from staff to continue this item to March 24th, and we would need a motion to that effect.
I'll move the item to continue.
Can I ask why that recommendation was made? It seems straightforward.
The applicant couldn't be here this evening and ask for the item to be continued.
Then I will second it.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Okay, sorry, next item, please.
Your next item is item number eight, Toll Brothers at Folsom Ranch. This is property at the northwest corner of White Rock Road and East Bidwell Street in the Folsom Plan area. The subitems are resolution number 10-400, ordinance 1301, ordinance 1302, ordinance 1303, and ordinance 1304.
Hello.
And just, if you could just remember to talk into that microphone so Councilmember Vice Mayor Sheldon can catch all this.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Aquino, and Councilmember Steve Banks with the Community Development Department. The project before you this evening is the Toll Brothers at Folsom Ranch subdivision project. They are seeking approval of a number of entitlements as listed on the screen, including a general plan amendment, a specific plan amendment, a small lot vesting tentative subdivision map, a planned development permit, development agreement amendments, of which there are four, and lastly, an inclusionary housing plan. This is a vicinity map, and as you can see, the proposed project site, which is 314 acres in size, is located in the southern portion of the Folsom Plan area. It is bound by East Bidwell Street to the east, the future extension of Mangini Parkway to the north, White Rock Road to the south, and the future extension of Oak Avenue Parkway to the west. This is an aerial photograph showing the topography of the project site, and I'm sure most of you have been to the project site, but it's interesting to see that as you are closer to East Bidwell Street to the east, it's fairly flat, and then as you move further to the west, it becomes fairly hilly quite quickly. And then as you move further to the west, it is generally flat. There's still some smaller hills, but a little more flattened nature as you are closer to Oak Avenue Parkway to the west. As I noted, there are a number of entitlements being requested. The project includes 1,225 total residential units. Of those 1,200 units, 1,011 are age-restricted units, or 55-plus units. 214 of those units are a traditional single-family residential subdivision located in the western portion of the project site. The applicant is seeking approval of a general plan amendment as well as a specific plan amendment. There are some land use boundary changes both within the project site and also outside the project site, but within the Folsom Plan area. There are a number of backbone roadway modifications with this project. There are some improvements to the public trail system within the project area, and there's also a relocation of a neighborhood park within the project to a new location within the plan area. The applicant is also seeking approval of a vesting tentative subdivision map to create 804 residential lots with this application. The remainder of those lots, as part of Phase Two, would come back before this council at a future date for the, for the mapping of Phase Two of the active adult community. There are a number of amenities with this project, including three private amenities within both Phase One and Phase Two of the active adult community. There's also a private amenity proposed with the market rate single-family subdivision. There are two dog parks also proposed with this project within the active adult community. The active adult community is proposed to be gated, while the market rate community is supposed to be non-gated. They are proposing approval of a planned development permit as well to deviate from the development standards established within this area. Some of those deviations include a slight increase in lot coverage to accommodate outdoor living spaces in the rear yards of these homes. There are also reductions and setbacks to accommodate smaller setbacks. The focus of this project is on the outdoor spaces in the project area and not having as large lots with the actual individual homes. So there are a number of trail systems throughout the project area, private amenities, and so again, their focus is on the open spaces and the spaces around the homes, not necessarily providing larger yards for the residents. They've submitted architecture and design for Phase One of the active adult community and also for the, there are two types of products within the active adult community. There are single-family detached homes, and they're all single-story homes, and there are also attached townhomes, and there are 15 master plans combined among the single-family detached and attached product line. There are four development agreement amendments proposed with this project to acknowledge and document the entitlements proposed with this project, and also to document the changes to the public park within the project area. And lastly, there's an inclusionary housing plan. The applicant's intent is to pay an in-lug fee to the city, which would go into the city's housing trust fund to help fund affordable housing projects, like you were discussing a few minutes ago. This is an exhibit or a site plan of the proposed project. The area to the east, as you see here, is what is known as Regency Phase One, so this is the first phase of the active adult community. Phase Two, which is not proposed to be mapped this evening, but we mapped it a future date, is located just to the west of Phase One. Again, this is the active adult community Phase Two. And then further to the west, you have traditional single-family residential subdivision. Again, this is a non-gated community in the traditional single-family subdivision to the west. The active adult community is proposed to be gated. There are six access points to the proposed project, one off of Oak Avenue Parkway, four off of Mangini Parkway, and one off of East Bidwell Street. There are no access points, vehicle access points, off of White Rock Road. As I noted, there's an extensive trail system, public trail system, that goes throughout the project site, shown with the red dashed lines on the site plan. Those are public trails accessible to the public. For the public to get into the private community, there are gates, and so those gates will be restricted to members of the active adult community, but the public can use the trail system in and around that area. There are access points to the market rate subdivision, and that will be accessible to the public into the market rate subdivision. As I noted, there are three private amenities proposed with this project. Fairleigh Lars Clubhouse facility is proposed in the eastern portion of the project site, as shown in this triangle area on the site plan. Phase Two of Regency, or the active adult community, will also have a private amenity on the south side of Regency Parkway, and the market rate community will also have a private amenity for their residents as well. There are also two private dog parks in the age-restricted community, one just south of Mangini Parkway in the northeast corner of the project site, and the other just north of Regency Parkway in Phase Two of the project site. So those are the highlights of the site plan for you. As I noted, the applicant's requesting approval of a general plan amendment and a specific plan amendment. The purpose of this is they're developing less lots within this project area than were allotted by the specific plan that was approved in 2011. So they're developing 233 less lots than were anticipated for this project area. And so they're using the density transfer policy established by this specific plan to move those 233 lots to other locations outside of the project area but within the Folsom Plan area. And what this will result is an increase in density in some of these parcels, which in turn requires a change in the zoning designation or the specific plan designation to accommodate that increased density. And as I mentioned, there's a density transfer. As you can see, the units are going to various locations, primarily around the town center area, where we would expect the more dense locations to be, to be supported. This is a project site, and I want to touch on the major changes to the project site with this general plan and specific plan amendment. Number one, there's currently medium family, medium-density multifamily property shown in the orange color here. That is being shifted more towards the town center. There's also multifamily low-density property that is being shifted down just north of White Rock Road with this proposal. Otherwise, it's single-family high-density throughout the project. There's some minor modifications to the, to open space to avoid sensitive areas as well. I mentioned there's a number of changes to the roadway system as per the 2011 Folsom Plan area specific plan. Number one, as shown in A on the left-hand side here, there was a north-south roadway connecting future Mangini Parkway to White Rock Road. That road is being eliminated with this proposal. There's also a roadway going right through the middle of the open space preserve of the oak woodland area, and that is being eliminated with this proposal. And lastly, there's an overcrossing on the western portion of the project site that's being eliminated with this proposal. There are also a couple of over crossings being added to this proposal, and those are shown at C in the far right of the exhibit. These are crossing the open space areas. In terms of the trail system, they're actually adding .3 miles of Class I trails within the project area, and that's located on the south side of Mangini Parkway in the western portion of the project site. So otherwise, the trail, the length of trails remains unchanged. Again, they're adding .3 miles total to the existing trail system that was approved. In terms of the public parkland, there was supposed to be a 10-acre local park within the, I'm sorry, neighborhood park within the project area, as shown in green on the left-hand side here. The applicant is moving that park, actually moving it to two locations. Eight acres will be shifted to the west to a location where there's already a two-acre local park, and that will become the new neighborhood park, 10 acres in size, consistent with what was originally proposed in the product area. The other two acres will be shifted more towards the town center to an existing one-acre site, increasing that local park up to three acres in size. I would also note that the Parks and Rec Commission reviewed this proposal regarding the shifting of the parkland, and they were supportive of that proposal. There are a number of tentative subdivision maps proposed with this project. As I mentioned, this is Regency Active Adult Community. They are proposing to map 590 units in this area today, with the remaining units to be mapped with Phase Two. Staff has reviewed these lots, and they all meet the minimum requirements of the Subdivision Map Act. Shifting over to the market rate subdivision, they are proposing 214 single-family residential lots. These lots are slightly larger in size, and again, these lots also meet the requirements of the Subdivision Map Act. This is an exhibit just showing the different lot sizes throughout the subdivision. There are actually seven different lot sizes spread throughout the subdivision, five lot sizes in the active adult community to the east, and two different lot sizes in the market rate community to the west. This is a phasing exhibit provided by the applicant. The first phase proposed with this project would be to the east with Regency Phase One, as shown in the yellow, green, and pink areas. Phase Two would be to the far west, it would be the traditional subdivision, and then the last phase would be Regency Phase Two in the central portion of the project site. A traffic analysis was done for this project. It looked at a number of study intersections in and around the project site as well as other locations throughout the Folsom Plan area. I've listed the daily trips, as well as AM and peak hour trips. The study concluded there would be no new impacts or not previously considered with the EIR and ES prepared for the Folsom Plan area specific plan in 2011. And the traffic consultant is here this evening if you have any specific questions regarding the traffic analysis. In terms of measured open space, the applicant is actually proposing to provide 2.2 additional acres of measured W open space above and beyond what is required, and we're certainly supportive of that. Oak tree preservation and removal, this was a topic that was discussed at length at the Planning Commission meeting in February, and for good reason. The plan for the oak tree preservation and removal was established in 2011 as part of the Folsom Plan area specific plan, and the environmental documents that were reviewed and approved at that time. There are 642 acres of oak woodland habitat identified for preservation with the, with the specific plan, and there were specific mitigation and objectives and policies established as part of the specific plan. In reviewing this project, we focused about, on this greatly, and there's a lot of discussion about this at the Planning Commission in February, as I mentioned. And I have an exhibit I'll share with you in a second that shows, shows the different types of oak trees in the plan area and how those were evaluated when the specific plan was reviewed and approved in 2011. So this is an exhibit from the, from the specific plan, and there are essentially three different types of canopies or trees within the plan area. The area is shown in blue and yellow, or oak tree woodlands in a preserve area, and the intent of the specific plan is these areas were not supposed to be touched or modified, and that development was intended to stay out of these areas shown in blue and yellow. We also have canopy areas outside this preserve area, and those are shown in the orange color. And we also have isolated oak trees, and those are areas shown, it's a little harder to see, but there are red dots scattered throughout this area. And in terms of the canopy areas outside the preserve area, it was expected that there would be impacts to those oak trees in those areas on development parcels, and policies and procedures were set up to mitigate for those impact to the canopy trees outside the preserve areas, and there are five specific mitigation measures set up in the Folsom Plan area specific plan for which the applicant is required to mitigate the impact to the oak trees. And we believe the applicant, with the plan, which I'll share with you in a moment, has, is consistent with the objective of the Folsom Plan area specific plan in terms of their mitigation obligations. The applicant did also prepare an individual study of the individual oak trees shown in red within the project area, and those oak trees, the individual oak trees, are actually required to be mitigated per the pre-preservation ordinance, which the council recently updated and adopted. There are a little under 18 acres of oak woodland on the project site, of which a little over 10 acres are proposed to be preserved. The applicant has also identified a little under half acre of area they are attempting to preserve as they go through the approval process. There are 90 individual or isolated oak trees on the project site. The applicant is preserving 22 of those oak trees, and there are another eight that have identified as having the potential to preserve. There are a number of constraints on the project site. For those of you who visited the project site, as there's a varied topography on the project site, which represents the challenge, the slope varies from 0 to 15% throughout the project site with elevation that ranges from 338 feet above sea level to 428 feet above sea level. The finish grade is going to be 368 feet to 394 feet above sea level. And cuts and fill, we're looking at cuts of up to 51 feet and significant fills of up to 34 feet. This is an exhibit provided by the applicant, and this is their oak tree preservation and removal plan. The areas in green are the preservation areas, and the trees shown in dark green are the areas, the trees are required to be preserved per this specific plan. The areas shown in green without the crouch hatch, these are areas the applicant identifies as potential areas to plant mitigation trees for their impact for removing oak trees on the project site. The areas shown in blue and pink for, pink here are areas where there is cut and fill of less than five feet. So those are areas where there, we think there's potential to, to preserve oak trees. And specifically, we've come to the far west portion of the project site, there's a grove of trees or canopy of trees in this area where you see the pink and the blue. Again, these are areas where there's less than five feet in cut and fill, where there may be potential to preserve oak trees. The areas shown in white, those are areas where you have over five feet of either cut or fill, which makes it extremely challenging to preserve oak trees in those particular areas. I'd also add, the applicant has identified a number of oak trees. It's shown in the purple circles, which are a little, little bit hard to see in the western portion of the project site here, and a canopy area here. And again, these are areas where they're looking to preserve specific trees or preserve areas around the canopy of trees. An addendum to the 2011 EIREES was prepared with this project. The addendum concluded there were no new impacts or not previously identified with the original EIR and EIS, and that the original conclusions of the EIREES still remain valid. Sent to environmentals here this evening, he has specific questions regarding their review of the environmental document. As I noted earlier, the Planning Commission reviewed this project at its February 19th meeting. There were no members from the public that attended this particular meeting. The focus of this discussion at the 19th meeting was the tree preservation and removal plan, and we spent a great deal of time talking about the goals and policies from the specific plan and how, and it was staff's determination the applicant had complied with the goals and policies of this specific plan in terms of removal and, and as well as preservation. The Planning Commission did evaluate and discuss the potential to preserve a specific grove or canopy of oak trees, and I'll hop back a little bit. There's this grove of, or canopy of oak trees in the north-southwest corner of the project site, and they discussed this area a lot and whether there was a potential to save oak trees in this area. And since that meeting, the applicant has been talking to city staff, and I believe after my presentation, the applicant has a potential solution to look into preserving more of the oak trees than the Planning Commission already thought were, were going to be preserved in this specific area. So I'll let the applicant delve into that in a few minutes. After a lengthy, thorough, thoughtful discussion, the Planning Commission did vote 6 to 1 to recommend approval of the project to the City Council this evening. And lastly, I'd like to finish off with some site photographs. This is a view looking east towards Eldorado Hills. This is a view looking north, northeast across the East Bidwell Street. This is actually in an epic, one of the preserve areas. This is the area where all these trees will be preserved on the project site. And this is that grove of oak trees, or the canopy of oak trees that I referenced earlier. And this is that grove of oak trees, the canopy of oak trees that I referenced earlier, where the applicant, I think, does have a solution to try and save some of these trees this evening. And this is, a lot of the discussion at the Planning Commission level was focused on this particular canopy of oak trees. And with that, we do forward the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval of the project. As always, I'm happy to answer questions. I also have a lot of other staff members who are involved in the preparation of the staff board who are happy to answer questions.
We'll start with Councilmember Gaylord.
I just said, on the last slide, was the one you were talking about, was that the upper grove or the lower grove?
This is the grove located in the southwest corner.
But not on the park, but below.
This is right here in the orange and the purple. That's that grove of oak trees.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions for Steve?
Just one thing that you kind of went over earlier in the presentation about which entrances are gated. Are both ends of Regency Parkway gated?
Yes. There are five entrances into the Regency, sub, age restricted community, I'm sorry, the four entrances, and they're all gated.
Okay, so the two entrances that are into the center section and the eastern section of the three developments?
Yes.
Those are both gated?
Yes.
Okay. So the walking hike bike paths, are those gated at all? Or is there free access?
There's free access to the trails, the Class One trails that I showed in red on the master plan exhibit. That's access to the public. If those people are residents from the age restricted community wish to access that, those trails, they can, and they can get back in. There'll be a restricted gate access at various points, but the public, it's not the intent for the public to go into the gated community and access their private clubhouses and their private streets in that community.
Oh, darn. Okay.
Okay, the applicant would like to come forward?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Scott Esposito, Toll Brothers Vice President. I oversee the operations for the Sacramento Division, and I have with me my colleague, Greg Van Dam, who's also Vice President, and he oversees the land. We didn't bring a PowerPoint presentation, we wanted to keep this short. We understand that the Planning Commission went really long, and we've had a chance to go over individually with, over this project, and I understand a lot of you have seen the video, the Planning Commission video. So we really want to talk about just a solution and kind of what we're all about here. I'll make this really quick. Toll, this is the first Active Adult Community that Toll is looking to build in California. We've been looking to build in California for years now, and we fell in love with Folsom. Once we saw the specific plan, we knew that this was the project that really called for an Active Adult Community, but also just, there's a lot of very important aspects about this specific grant that we really fell in love with. The trail system, Folsom has a trail system unlike no other city in this area. Our buyers are looking for an active lifestyle. Trails are great for that. The oak tree and the preserves, we fell in love with the amount of acres and entire specific plan of the oak tree preserves, and we feel that's a very important aspect of Active Adult Lifestyle. People want to live in a community that they can love, that they have pride in, and the specific plan really, it's a pretty amazing community. So when we saw this, we really, we easily identified that this is the place we wanted to be. We have an Active Adult portion. Our original plan was we were looking to do Active Adult in all three phases, and we ended up with our plan to have traditional on Phase Three, and then Active Adult on Phase One and Two. And that was with our pre-application that we submitted to the city. In order to be compliant with the specific plan, we did the pre-submit, worked with the city, we identified land plan, we got some comments back from the school district and the city, and we worked with them throughout the whole process to make sure that we were being compliant with this specific plan. Toll feels that with our request today, our entitlement request, there is a significant amount of benefits to the community that we're really excited about, and we want to go over some of these benefits. So Toll Brothers, we take a lot of pride in our community design and our architecture, and one of the things we find unique about our Active Adult portion is there are five different product lines, and each product has three plans. Each plan has four elevations, so there's 60 different plan elevation combinations seen throughout our Active Adult portion. We take a lot of pride in that, because our ultimate goal is when you drive through our community, you're not going to see the same home over and over again. We don't believe in cookie cutter communities. We believe in adding value to the communities we come into, and Folsom with the history, rich history and the beauty of just nature, and we really wanted to bring an architecture that you guys can be proud of. Another thing, and for the traditional side, we have two different product lines, and there's seven plans total and four elevations, so there's 28 different plan and elevation combos. So again, you're not going to see the same plan over and over again, and we feel that adds a lot of value. We've also taken and looked at the shops and some of the recent approvals for commercial, and we've taken the traditional home and we've modernized it a little bit, not to the point where it's ultra-modern, but to the point that's complementing what is going into the specific plan. So we're trying to be complementary. We've, as Steve mentioned, that we have those 10 acres of parkland that was moved within the specific plan to other locations, but we are also adding eight and a half acres of private parkland within the community. The Active Adult has a portion where we're going to have an 18,000 square foot rec center, where we have two dog parks, we have an amphitheater area that we're looking to build, and then in the traditional portion, we have a one and a half acre private rec center, and that's going to be open to the public. It's going to be built by Toll Brothers and maintained by the HOA, so there's no city responsibility. So Toll is still contributing to the 10 acres of parkland, and we're going to pay for our fees, but we're also going to be adding eight and a half of additional parkland for the entire specific plan. We are also, as mentioned, is we're going to add two and a half, or 2.2 acres of additional measured W open space. We feel that's an added benefit, because open space here is a beautiful area, it gives us additional place to mitigate for the oak trees. Product segmentation is what we feel is a benefit to the specific plan is, this is the first Active Adult, just full community that's going into the specific plan, and we feel that this is a segment that hasn't been, that's underrepresented in Folsom. You have Heritage down the street in Eldorado County, but we feel that in Active Adult in Folsom, there's a really strong appeal, and there's a lot of benefit to bring in Active Adult. For instance, is for traffic. Active Adult buyers, it's smaller households. You don't, you're less than two people per household, so the trips are significantly lower. You have retired residents, they're not driving during high-peak times. They're driving during the day, and there's the traffic, it actually reduces the traffic, less demand on the infrastructure, yet we're still covering our fair share of the portion of the infrastructure costs with the specific plan. School fees, we are still contributing to the school fees, we're paying a commercial rate, but we're not contributing any kids into the local schools, so there is an added benefit, and that's a reduction of about 600 students in that local area. The nice benefit is that our buyers, with all the history we've done, looked at with all different Regency communities, is a lot of our buyers, prospects, they love to volunteer. Volunteerism is very huge, and so with the local schools nearby, the middle school, high school, and elementary school, there's a lot of volunteerism that happens in the local school, so we find that is an added community benefit. Another benefit is that Active Adult buyers, they have a high disposable income, and a lot of times they do spend the money locally, and I know that's very important, because the Paladio's nearby, the Town Center's coming in, they like to spend in the local region. They don't like to spend in the big box stores as much, and they invest in the local economy, which is a strong point for this buyer profile. Our ultimate goal, and I tried to stress this at the Planning Commission meeting, is that Toll Brothers, we understand that this is a, we're in this relationship together. It's a five-to-seven-year project, that our ultimate goal is we want to work with the city, and we understand that what's best for the residents that buy at our community, that the residents of Folsom, that if we have a great relationship together. So our ultimate goal is having that collaborative relationship, and we really appreciated the staff's support throughout the whole process. We understand that there's different things that could have been done, we could have done upfront or whatnot, but we do appreciate, there's been a lot of back and forth that we feel that has actually benefited our project from staff recommendations that we've implemented throughout the process, and some of that has, especially with architecture, and we really appreciate that back and forth. We really try and take it serious, and what is the recommendations, and we really appreciated the process. As mentioned, is, you know, a Planning Commission, we received a six-one vote. The one thing I want to make clear is that we want a seven-zero vote, and so we took Commissioner Raythel's comments to heart, and we actually performed a lot of the items that he requested on why he gave us the no. And that's what I'm going to show you in a few minutes. We identified the, in the preserve, there's areas where we can preserve some trees, but we wanted to come with more concrete information for you today, and so we've actually identified every individual tree. We also have the health of each individual tree. ECorp has helped us to provide an arborist report. It's just an initial one, but it's talking about the health of the trees, and we really want to identify and make sure we do even more homework. And the nice thing is, is we're coming here to propose for a loss of lots to be able to save a significant chunk of the canopy that I hope that we can agree on tonight. And with our new plan, we are going to be able to save 13, there's 22 trees in the 3B canopy. With our proposal, we're looking to save 13 of the 22 trees. Of the trees that aren't able to save, four of those trees are in very poor health, identified by the arborist, and then the other are located in the streets.
Steve, could you put that slide up there so we are all looking at the same thing as he's going over this?
And just to, with that, that refers to this email that was sent earlier, right?
So our ultimate goal was, with going back and looking, is one of the discussion points was, do we do enough? Did the land plan identify, do we design properly to be able to preserve as many of the trees as possible, and do we act, do everything what's practical to save the trees? We did go back and we identified some of the previous land plans that we had, and to be honest, the previous land plans, there's a significant loss of lots. So what we're trying to find is a good balance between saving trees and the whole process, and we feel we've actually have a really good solution with saving the 13 of the 22 3B The first canopy houses eight trees. What we're proposing is to turn, take lots 56 and 57, and we want to just remove those lots. And so 55 is going to absorb Lot 56, we'll make an oversized lot, and then 58 will absorb Lot 57, which will save eight trees in that location. One thing to point out, there are two trees located along the street. We are looking, per the specific plan, it does mention that we can make minor adjustments with the city staff. We'd love to have that ability to work with them and the city arborist to make sure we can adjust the streets a little bit in order to make that work.
Did you say 55 would consume 56, and then 58 would, as well as 57?
Would take 57, yes. So it'd be oversized lots with trees on it.
And that would, okay, sorry, thank you.
We've also identified, so with us identified the individual trunks and the health of the trees, we identified even more clearly where the trunks were at, the elevation of the trees. We did determine that the trees on Lot 49 are actually in a lower grade, they're about three feet lower than the grade that we're going to have, but what we determined is if we, if we, if Lot, I believe we were saying Lot 48 is going to take 49, so 49 will go away, we can have a little bit of a depression, try and figure out a way to make it so it grades out, so those trees can be preserved. But our goal is to preserve those trees in Lot 49. We are...
Before you go off, can you add a, can we think about adding something to the documents for the purchase of those lots, so that the homeowners are aware that those are protected trees?
Yep, we can do that. So this portion is the end of the canopy. Sorry, I'm trying to speak in there for Ernie, but trying to go back and forth. This portion is the end of the canopy, these are identified as isolated that we discussed at the Planning Commission. As we identified, we are able to save this tree on the corner of 62. Our ultimate goal is to push the home back, and that's something we do want to work on with the city arborist to make sure that it's going to survive with us putting the home site on there. So we do need a little bit of that flexibility, but our ultimate goal is to save that tree. It's a beautiful tree, and it's in the corner of a lot, and we have that flexibility to push the home site back. If we choose one, a home site that doesn't have as deep of a footprint, we could push it back and have a smaller backyard. So that's our ultimate goal, but we are asking to work with the city arborist to make sure that, with our placement, that we can make that work. This part of the canopy right here is, four of the seven tree, four of those trees are listed in poor condition. One of them is fair condition, the other ones are good. So this one is, we're asking is, if we can give up those lots, are we, is this a comfortable, is this a comfortable proposal for Toll to offer?
When you say "if," what does that mean?
Meaning, that's what we're going to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought you meant like there was hesitation from the staff or something on that? It's just in general?
No, we've discussed with staff today. They're supportive. This is something we've been working on the last two weeks. We started the day after the Planning Commission, just, we had to do the, we had to locate the trunks, we had to identify what we can and cannot do. Our original understanding is to follow a specific plan, is the canopy trees didn't require us to take the individual trunks, but with the understanding that we identified that we were going to preserve a portion of the canopy, we were going to have to take the individual measurements anyways. And so we wanted to do that process and really respect Commissioner Raythel's request, and I hope that we've met with what he was asking for.
So you're saying the ones you identified, you would preserve, not preserve if practical, but you are pledging to preserve?
Preserve, yes. Those lots, we're not building anything, we're going to save those, and I mean, the only ones I mentioned is, these are on the street, so we do have to work with the city arborist to see what we can to make some minor adjustments, but everything else is, we're preserving.
Okay.
It is a beautiful canopy.
Any questions for Scott?
I just have one. Why combine those lots? Why not just not build on 57, 56, and 49? And I guess that begs a different question, really. If you're going to have a homeowners association take care of some of the landscaping, you could just leave those lots undeveloped and let whoever that is take care of them. Is that the intent, though, to have?
Our intent is to have the homeowners kind of oversee those.
Okay.
And we feel that, and part of it is, there is a mutual benefit of the trees, and so our ultimate goal, the reason why we play with that park in the center of the traditional, we're able to preserve those two, the two most beautiful trees in this entire traditional area for the entire community to see. These trees, we identified as, if we just have a tiny pocket park, there are other concerns, and so we feel the best is going to put it over to the homeowners, and we'll put that in kind of the, have an agreement to say these are protected trees, you can't take these down.
That would be my personal preference. We've had issues with maintenance all over town with those little tiny parks, and I don't know that I want to see that here. And I think at the end of the day, there's a benefit to the people that choose to purchase those lots. I know my house, I paid more because of the bunch of oak trees that are on my lot, and it was worth it to me.
Great, thank you.
If Ernie has questions, not comments, but just questions.
Any questions, Councilman Sheldon?
No questions.
Okay. Okay, anything else at this time? Thank you very much. We do have a few members of the public who would like to speak. We're going to start with Justin Raythel, then we'll go to Jennifer Lane and Barbara Leary.
Madam Mayor, since this agenda is as a public hearing item, may I recommend that you officially open public hearing?
I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Aquino, Vice Mayor Sheldon, not sure where to look when I address him, and he's that way. And councilmembers, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so that's why I'm in my finest of clothes before you this evening. But I do appreciate, we've been working on this project since mid-December at the planning level, and Toll Brothers unfortunately was the first project south of 50 that had significant oak impacts, and so they have come up with some new ways to look at things. They have kind of gotten drug through the wringer on this project, and so I appreciate them working all the way up until this meeting, this evening, in order to come up with some good solutions. So 3B is a good canopy that's down there, that you guys have... So 3B is a good canopy that's down there, that you guys have all seen. And all I was asking for was the fact that they would look into this, the canopies, to see which trees we could save out of those, to see if we needed to switch any tentative subdivision map, any lot lines beforehand. And I think they have met that with this modification this evening. And I know you guys are very familiar with the project now, so I'll leave it open to you guys to see if any other changes need to be made. But this does address my concerns on canopy 3B.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership on this, Chair Rathell.
Justin, if I can, I sincerely appreciate all the work you've put into this. Because, you know, bringing this up from a commission phase where you had some questions and then you saw it through, not just a, you know, it went through six to one. You took it, you quarterbacked it, and you brought it to everyone's attention. So that's true leadership, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Jennifer Lane?
I too appreciate Justin's leadership. It was a four-plus hour meeting, very intense. I think for sure Justin, Barbara, and I were all about the trees. So I just want to say, last year, I went to each classroom at Oak Chan to tell the third graders about the different commissions. And while there, one of the students asked me, a girl, "Have you ever made a decision that you regret?" And I said, "Yes." And I told her what it was, drew a picture on the board, and said, "I'm sorry I did that." And I regret too, voting for this project because of the trees. I was the first one to vote, which made it even harder. I think it could have been a three to four vote easily, had I voted with my conviction. I think the Toll project has good amenities, but I still was sick about losing the trees. I'm going to refer to this letter that Paul Romero, the Chair of the Parks Commission, wrote. Just the first sentence, "As you know, I am extremely interested in protecting natural resources and dedicated my life to educating people about the value of our natural environment to our mental and physical health." And I know I did that with my third graders over 20-plus years at Oak Chan. So I'm here to echo that. I'm glad to see that some of the trees have been saved. I think that's an honorable gesture. That's really all I want to say. Thank you for listening. Well, I have a couple of seconds here. I just want to say, there was a project on Glen and Sibley a few years ago. And there was at least a 300-year-old oak tree, I'm going to refer to what you said, Mike. And because the developer misjudged the lot or where the tree was, he had to lose a house. And I fought as hard as I could to save that tree. I mean, it was older than our city. And I lost. And the next day, that tree came down. And every time I look into that subdivision, I think about that tree and look at that house, and kind of disgusted looking at that house. Because that could have been a place where people that, of that neighborhood, congregate and meet. And I said that, put a picnic table near there and, you know, have it be a beautiful thing for this little neighborhood that's kind of stuck together with all these little houses and little lots. That's all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jennifer. And thankful, thank you for the thoughtful discussion at the planning commission. I think any of us who have watched that meeting, we know that although it was a six-one vote, it was much closer than that. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Barbara, come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor Sheldon, wherever you are. I submitted a letter earlier today, and I'm not going to read the whole thing because there have been a few changes. And I'm glad to see that everybody has been willing to continue to try to work on making this a better project. But I would like to acknowledge that I made a mistake in my vote supporting this recommendation to the council. And what I found was that I was also unable to initiate a motion to reconsider or amend parts of the commission action following the meeting when I remained concerned about some aspects of our decision. So that was very frustrating, and I took the opportunity to talk to some of the council members and staff about what a commission can do if we feel that we've made a mistake. Because I've found that I was not the only one that felt that way. I really appreciate all of you that took the time to watch that commission meeting because it was extremely frustrating to find a way to make this project better and to save more trees, for a number of reasons. Because of the significant grading that's going on in that area that's essentially removing some of the rolling hills. And I want to explain a little bit more about what made this difficult, because it's something that I think we all need to work through and learn more about. You know, I explored the, and substantiated the validity of the concerns I expressed at the meeting regarding the interpretation of the language in the Folsom Plan, Area-Specific Plan, the FPASP, which is still a little difficult to spit out, and the General Plan. And I also want to thank Chair Rathell for his persistence in seeking further clarification of the language and direction in those documents as well. As I noted at the meeting, I found that the language, and subsequently in the findings, is subjective, vague, and open to interpretation. In attempting to sort out what decision-making power we had at the commission level, I was unable to ascertain the latitude that the commission had in supporting or denying parts of the project. The certainty on the part of staff that the programmatic EIR had anticipated and accepted the significant changes in topography and tree removal led me, and I believe other commissioners, to inaccurately believe that we could not make substantive changes. And I'm not trying to imply that staff misled us, but I think that their understanding of language is different than some of ours was. And one of the examples of what I find to be ambiguous language is, principle two in the FPASP, includes, notes that the goal is to enhance the natural environment. It includes one of the largest natural open space plans in the Sacramento region for the preservation, protection, and enhancement of natural resources, including oak woodlands and its hillsides and scenic vistas. However, the plan then goes on to state in policy 10.15, that though oak trees are included in residential and non-residential development parcel impacted woodlands, are encouraged to be preserved wherever practical. However, provided preservation does not cause a reduction in the number of lots, require mass grading, or require the use of retaining walls. These latter statements constrain the preservation of oaks and are used despite the fact that they do not preclude the developer from making such efforts to save more trees, or the staff from encouraging more tree retention. So I was happy to see that the developer has looked at making some changes, particularly in areas, which one, is that 3A or 3B?
3B.
3B. I agree with a plan to just not build upon those lots and leave those as a protected space. They also noted this evening that there's some potential for changing either the, where the houses sit in the senior subdivision, and saving some more trees. I guess what my concern is at this point, is that these things are, you know, potential saves. And I, and that was one of the things that bothered me about the planning commission meeting, was they said, "Well, we could look at this, but by the time we were done with this hearing, we didn't actually know what could and would be done because there was no condition or revision of a plan that we could approve." And that was frustrating. So I'm just going to suggest that the council continue this hearing until we have more specific maps and more specific commitment to saving trees on all of these lots. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all of your time.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Rosario Rodriguez, and I am a Folsom resident. I just want to give a little feedback on the plans submitted by Toll Brothers. I looked at the company's website on the adult active community, and it is pretty amazing what I saw. I think if something like that looks that good in Reno, I can only imagine how fantastic it'll look in Folsom. So it kind of reminds me of the Four Seasons in El Dorado Hills, but only better with the 18,000 square feet of clubhouse, swimming pool, and bike trails. And as the applicant mentioned, you know, the active 55 communities are really key to our community because they are individuals who do shop locally, they invest in our communities through their volunteerism, and them being empty nesters is just a really neat part. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak? Otherwise, I am going to close the public hearing. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I do have a couple of questions, Mr. City Attorney. Depending on the pleasure of the council, if we decided to approve everything that we're considering tonight, along with the modifications that Toll Brothers has offered, is that something that we can do tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor. And may I suggest that you incorporate additional condition number 107, as presented to you by staff.
Okay.
And that condition conforms with the latest email and proposal that you just heard from the developer, with respect to preservation of those trees.
Okay. And Pam, with regard to the comments by Barbara Leary, how much certainty is it realistic to expect in terms of, you know, there are trees that they have identified that they would like to save, but maybe until they get out there and start grading and stuff. When you approve a tentative subdivision map, is that license to take down a tree if they cannot save it? Or is there kind of another step? Do you, when they do the grading plan, is there?
Yeah, so we have a preliminary grading plan, or topographic plan, with the tentative subdivision map. And then we get more detailed engineered grading plans after. And sometimes that happens right on the heels, or, you know, with someone ready to go with development, they might submit plans at, you know, at risk while their plans are going through the process. Or they might submit them two or three years down the line. Regardless, when grading and improvement plans come in, they're evaluated for consistency with that high-level, you know, preliminary plan and tentative subdivision map. And they get into a much finer level of detail with detailed, the tree permit, which will have detailed surveys of individual trees identified for potential preservation. Those get evaluated by our arborist, and they'll determine whether the grading and construction impacts are such that the tree can be preserved and has a high likelihood of survival, or if those construction and grading impacts are likely to create an impact that will not allow the tree to survive in the future. So that gets evaluated in detail by our arborist as part of the grading plans. So we have detailed grading plans for Phase One that have just recently been submitted for the age-restricted area that Barbara has mentioned, or active adult area. So we are starting to look at those. We'll make sure we have all the detailed surveys of any trees proposed for preservation, and look at any specific construction mitigation that would be proposed to preserve the trees at that time. If it's feasible, we will absolutely require the preservation of those trees. If it's not feasible, and the tree will not likely survive in the opinion of our arborist, then we will require the mitigation of that tree consistent with the specific plan in the city's tree preservation ordinance.
Okay, but if we were to adopt the tentative subdivision map tonight, and we needed to change a setback, or move a lot line or something to preserve a tree, you have the discretion to do that administratively?
Yes. Substantial compliance with the map and policy 10.19 of the specific plan allows for the administrative level, director level approval of modifications to things like a slight adjustment to a setback in order to preserve a tree or stay outside of a canopy to allow for the protection. And we have every intent to do that.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Roger, do you have a question?
Well, I guess just more on that piece. Given what the applicants come forward with today versus what Justin said as far as, and the commissioners that have spoken today with the trees, would you have recommended what they've proposed on this, with that survey coming back going forward? Or would you have kept the same?
We required of them what's outlined in the specific plan, that oak canopies in developable areas provide the canopy survey, and that the isolated oak trees require individual tree surveys. It's certainly more helpful if they are providing it, but it's not required by the specific plan. And we have, you know, gone over that, you know, extensively at a staff level. And there's, you know, you look at the whole body of that section, and the areas of oak woodland that are to be preserved in perpetuity. And the offset of that is that there are some areas of oak woodland that are determined to be impacted by development. And that's true on this site, and that's true on other sites moving forward. Certainly, we have every interest in trying to preserve them, and we assume that property owners in the future will have an interest in trying to preserve those. But we will expect that there will be removal and impact and mitigation of those trees that are identified as impacted outside of the oak woodland preserve. Right now, we do not require those to be individually surveyed at the time of the development entitlement. But they, if they are proposing to preserve them, when they come in for grading and things like that, then yes, we will have individual surveys, and we will look in detail at what can be done to maximize preservation of those trees.
So, and I'm probably veering off what this is about at this point, but I think it deserves a follow-up discussion on the specific plan. Because I've always, I shouldn't say I've always, policy 10.18 has always stuck in my mind, and then how vague everything is. It really is open to interpretation. And I feel like, you know, with the planning commission and with where we're at at this point on the council with the dais, it's really not fair to the applicant to go through all these hoops and hurdles to come back and have to address these things. I feel like they should be upfront prior versus after. So that's probably a whole different discussion, but-
Well, I think staff has been very consistent in their interpretation from applicant to applicant. But because they're here for a general plan amendment, that gives us kind of free rein to insist on something more. Is that correct?
At the city council level, yes, absolutely. With a general plan amendment, there's more discretion and determination about community benefit for the general plan amendment. But in terms of what's required for us to evaluate the project, the applicant was consistent. And that will be true, you know, moving forward, as outlined in this specific plan.
I think, my point is, I think the applicant's been super consistent, but I think that our policies are vague. I think it's very open, and it's, I feel like due diligence should be done prior versus that, or beforehand versus after the fact. And, I don't know, I would just like to see us actually qualify, what exactly would that take? If we looked at this map and seeing where it's laid out and plotted, going out to the site itself was kind of an eye-opener, which I'm glad I did, actually twice, and to see where these actually sit, and then what could be done. Because on the site, talking to the applicant, there really wasn't much at that time to theorize besides losing lots, right? So I don't know, I would just like to see more verbiage to finally detail what we're doing to actually protect trees in a distinctive by nature city like Folsom, so.
Madam Mayor, if I may assist in addressing that request, which is not unreasonable. However, please keep in mind that the specific plan is a vested right, a vested document, since it's been adopted by the city council and incorporated into various development agreements for all south of 50 properties. So to the extent that the council would like to modify the specific plan, we can, but it's not a, it's not, it's not a one-sided process, let me put it that way. However, even if we do not get an opportunity to refine the language in the specific plan, to the extent that any decision-making bodies, such as the planning commission or the city council, would find some additional information, not helpful, but not presented, you always have the opportunity to make that request, continue the meeting, until the developer, the applicant can present whatever you believe would be helpful to you, so that you can make- can present whatever you believe would be helpful to you so that you can make the best decision possible.
Okay, are there any other questions? If there are no questions, then I'm going to ask for a motion so that we can focus this discussion and make sure that we are deliberating on that motion only, so.
I'll make a motion to approve contingent on staff. How should I word this exactly? To accept this offer and to further ask the staff to consider what the best disposition of those lots is for the preservation of the trees.
So I think you would make the motion with the Condition 107 that's in your transmittal sheet.
Okay, so I'll...
And the attachment and the direction that we move forward, working with the applicant to preserve the trees that are identified as potential or preserved.
Hey, Mike, before you do that, just, I did have one more question on the second lot that said it was pending per the city arborist. Is that, how does that work if, is it just that they're going to go in and look at it and try and verify it, or is it something that we make a condition that they make that plan that was recommended?
Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
I was, I was paying attention, but on a different matter.
So lots 56, 57, and 58 are fine, but there was a second, there was a fourth lot 49 that I think the condition was depending on the city arborist. So how does that work as far as a condition? Is it just?
The language is in the condition that you have before you.
That's the new Condition 107 provided to the city council tonight.
So I'll move approval, including...
May I assist?
Please.
If you don't mind, Councilmember Kozlowski.
I've lost the thread here a little bit in terms of how to word this.
Thank you, thank you. And we're all busy tonight, so there are five actual items before you tonight. You will have to take action, make a motion with a second, and take action on each one individually.
Okay.
The first one is Resolution Number 10-400-10400. I would recommend that the motion would include also adding Condition Number 107 presented to you tonight.
Okay, so I'll move approval of Resolution Number 10-400, including Condition Number 107.
And I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
I actually, with regard to the conversation, excuse me about the tree stuff. I think it's been, we've established a very good record that the developer is going to have to go back and provide some additional information. We need to give some administrative authority to Community Development Department, and we need to keep in mind that the, moving forward, that this is going to be developed over a five to seven-year time period. And I'm going back to me being many years ago, the person who made Winco move their building to save the oak tree in front of the building, and the Lord stepped in, and the tree in front of, well, Winco, went down in a storm. So I think to demand at this point that a tree is going to have to be saved three years from now that may or may not still exist, I think that's being a little bit unreasonable. So I think that we've made the record very, very clear as to what we expect staff to do and how we expect them to move forward with this in evaluating the condition of the trees, and we need to give them a little bit, a little bit of leeway, in my opinion.
Okay, does Councilmember Sheldon have anything to add?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
When we do development, we're going to run into this issue all the time, and we have. Preservation of trees is not new. I studied this pretty good, had some discussions with various people on this in the past two days, and I'm very happy to hear the developer making concessions and doing more research on preservation. But when you ask to withhold a project up, I learned this from another developer, a prominent one, us advocate, which I'm one of them. All we do when we do this is our time. A development or developer can use, lose significant financial resources. So we have to be very, very cautious when we make recommendations such as this. I think as far as I'm concerned, when you're going to have small lots and a lot of lots, you're going to listen to, because it can't go on the lot. But the mitigation of moving some of the park sites to other park sites into the industrial area, I think that shows good faith, and I would hope that Toll Brothers would continue to work in that attitude while they build out their projects. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, did you have something to add?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We need to make a minor correction. The new condition presented to you is actually new Condition Number 108, not 107, 108. So with that noted, the motion...
I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Kozlowski.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 10400. If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Oh.
Wait, just, I just wanted to make one comment, and I'll keep it brief. First of all, I want to thank everybody that's been involved in this. The happy accident is that this actually, in spite of some misgivings at the planning commission, rapidly came to a resolution tonight, I believe. But I think for the benefit of the staff potentially, for developers who may be looking at the lots that abut these woodlands down there, the sensitivity level of both the planning commission and the city council, I believe, is a little heightened because of those oak woodlands and the, you know, the reason we protected so much of them in the first place is because they are genuinely distinctive. And eating away at the edges of them, we have to be very, very thoughtful, and I thank Mr. Esping and Van Damme and the Toll Brothers Company for taking that seriously. And I think the headline here is that the project overall is like 99.9% awesome. So, thank you.
Okay, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yeah.
And Aquino?
Yes.
And I will move introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 1301.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes.
I'll move ordinance, introduction and first reading of Ordinance 1302.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes.
Since no one's talking, I'll also move introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 1303.
Second.
I doubt there's any discussion, so call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes.
And I'll move intro and first reading of Ordinance Number 1304.
Second.
Okay, no discussion, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. And I want to echo Councilmember Kozlowski's comments and really thank Toll Brothers for making the effort to save those trees. That's important to Folsom and important that we, you know, make South of 50 look like North of 50 in that sense, so we appreciate the efforts. I also want to really thank the planning commission. I'm really proud of our planning commission and really appreciate their thoughtfulness and how much time they spent asking questions and deliberating, and, you know, in the end, I think we made the project better. So everybody, thank you very much for your interest. So with that, we will move on to the city manager reports.
Okay, I have just a few items. First, just a quick update on the coronavirus. We want to assure the community that we are working closely with CDC, the State Department of Public Health, and the County Department of Public Health on this issue. On Thursday, March 5th, the Sacramento County Health Department, which serves as the lead in public health emergencies, declared a health emergency, but that was for the purpose only of getting appropriate resources and funding for the county. As of this morning, there were 133 laboratory confirmed cases in California. There are 10 confirmed cases within Sacramento County, and none that we know of in Folsom. We want everyone, especially the elderly and those with chronic conditions, to be mindful of any symptoms they may have, such as a high fever, cough, shortness of breath, respiratory difficulties, but also please keep in mind that it's also flu and allergy season, so symptoms don't necessarily mean that you have the virus. And finally, we'd like to encourage everyone to take as many preventive actions as they can. If you're feeling sick, please stay home, cover your cough and sneezes, wash your hands with soap and water often, avoid touching your eyes, nose, mouth with unwashed hands, and clean frequently surfaces and objects, and clean them daily if you can. Secondly, just a reminder, the submit projects for the 2020 Community Service Day, which will be Saturday, September 19th, and if you want to help identify potential project ideas, there's a brainstorming meeting Wednesday, March 25th at 5:30 at the Folsom Community Center. And for more information, you can visit our website at www.folsomcommunitieservice.org or contact the city communications director, Christine Brainard, at 916-461-6013. And lastly, just as you know, our city manager, Elaine Anderson, is at home recovering from surgery, and we wish her a speedy recovery and are looking forward to seeing her back at work in the near future.
Thank you.
She is barred from the building at the moment, though, right?
She's, pardon?
Barred from the building at the moment.
Well, we've tried, but you never know where she'll show up.
Turn off her card key.
Councilmember Gaylord?
I don't have anything. There is an update from Airborne, Sac Airborne, and the takeaway I got actually from it was a partnership between the Airborne as well as Coca-Cola and Tesla, trying to push their fleet into fully electric vehicles, so that was pretty cool, and there's more talk on that, but other than that, I am glad to be here the last hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Howell?
Amazingly saw someone run, you know, way, way past when the light turned red today at a major intersection in town. It's still a miracle that nobody got hit, so please drive carefully. The stop sign applies to you, the red light applies to you, and the speed limit applies to you, regardless of who you are. We're still working diligently with STA and all of the other regional transportation-related stuff, including the connector, JPA, and RT, in advance of the STA meeting on Thursday afternoon at the County Board of Supervisors at 1:30 relative to hopefully moving forward with the Measure A Half-Cent Sales Tax Initiative. So we'll see what happens on Thursday.
Thank you. Councilmember Kozlowski?
The SACOG Policy and Innovation Committee did not meet this month, so I don't have much to report. I did sit in on the school district two-by-two, and we spent some time talking about the steps they're taking, which are also measured and educational, dealing with the COVID-19 situation, and then just getting an update on the progress with their construction projects, which are moving ahead apace.
Okay, does Vice Mayor Sheldon have anything?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for attaching me tonight, I could participate. And I want to thank everybody in Folsom. It's a great town, full of great people, and I'm working hard, trying to get back, but it will be a while more, but thank you for keeping me involved. Thank you.
We miss you.
And, you know, I thanked the applicant and I thanked the planning commission, but I really want to thank our staff. We know you guys have put a lot of time into this, and we thank you for being accessible and taking, I know, I know you spent a lot of time on the phone with Chair Rathel, you've spent some time with me, with Commissioner Leary, a lot of us, so thank you. Thank you for being professional and accessible, and we really appreciate you guys. Councilmember Kozlowski and I will be holding mobile office hours on Saturday, March 21st, at his satellite office, which is Lucille's. It is next to Posh Bagel at the corner of East Bidwell, or East Nataoma and Blue Ravine, so come on over between 10:00 AM to noon, and then get well, Ernie and Elaine. You know, these things often happen in threes, so someone else is next, it won't be me, so. We are adjourned, thank you.